They started that with me, I'm gonna start on time.
Why don't you hear? On purpose.
John is really sweating. Where's Cory?
I had to take jazz home and that always throws stuff off a little bit.
Take jazzing?
Yesterday, he didn't have a car, he was playing all this stuff. I had to take him home on my way, or not yesterday.
Alright, it's six o'clock, we'll get the meeting started. Dial it to order, awards presentation, Mount Pleasant. Historic zoning commission, mayor's appointment, I'm gonna recommend Manya Hunter. Manya lives at, on Pleasant Street and it's right in the district.
Mayor, it's also your, for Ms. Freddie Walker who passed away a few months ago.
Correct, that's the replacement. Completion review of any unfinished business? Phillip?
Yes, sir.
Monthly report from mayor, I'm just gonna kinda catch everybody up on the square and where we are with that. Anything else anybody think of? That's kinda it, really. Phillip, city manager report?
I have one Tuesday night, unless you have some specific questions right now for me.
Rich?
I did talk to Lee today and it was generic, so they're paving. As soon as they do that, they put the railing in, stripe it and open it up, but there's no date, of course, in that message.
No date, of course.
We still don't wanna put another date?
No, sir.
No, I don't think we won't put any more dates on them, do we? Oh, that's funny. It's gotten to the point now, you gotta laugh about it. Waste water liaison?
I haven't received anything from bars yet, but we'll have one Tuesday.
Okay, gas system?
I'll have a report Tuesday.
Okay. Cory, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven thirty-five, the first reading an ordinance regarding an annexation request.
So, the topic of the hour, I gave y'all all memo. Just to kinda try to succinctly explain exactly what would be before this commission. So, as you know, the city is considering annexation of this one hundred and six acres off Truckwood and Old Zion. When you annex property, you're adding it to the city. All annex, when you annex property, this board is the one that decides whether to annex, how to serve that property and how to zone it. So y'all have all that power. Each of those three things have to be considered by the planning commission. And then you take their consideration when you are deliberating and deciding what to do. Properties are annexed pursuant to what's called a plan of services, which outlines which, like which city services that y'all will provide and how you'll provide them, so what happened at the date of annexation. Okay, so that's when you become like an adoption, you've adopted this part into your city and you take control over it and you also have to service it. Also, annexed properties must be simultaneously zoned. But the city zoning ordinance says, any territory annexed into the city shall upon annexation establish the zoning classification of annexed property simultaneous with the effective date of annexation. So, you have to do those things together. Also, this is an annexation by owner consent. So, if y'all were here Tuesday, you heard some people talking about like, what I'll call land grabs, like back ten, twenty years ago, cities could just annex property, they could proactively say, I want that property and they can annex it in. You can do an annexation by referendum, but we've never done that. You know, what we're doing here is the owners of that property said, we would like to be in the city of Mount Pleasant. So, they submitted an application and that's why it's before y'all. So this is, that's, you can explain to any of your constituents that acts, like the reason that it's before you is because the owners of that property asked for it to be. Because it is annexation by owner consent, the owners have to consent to what's happening. So, also another, there are things called urban growth boundaries around each municipality in Tennessee. And that growth boundary says how far you could grow. And those are protective, it's a protective thing, it's to make sure that like Columbia doesn't annex property that should have grown with Mount Pleasant. And to make sure, you know, with Frank Hill, everybody has their own urban growth boundary. So this property is in Mount Pleasant's urban growth boundary, so it could only be annexed by Mount Pleasant. So that's another important part of this, that this is within your ability to annex. And outside of everyone else's ability to annex.
So, if we decided not to, could Murray County allow somebody to build there?
Oh, yes, so they're, they're in Murray County right now, so they could just as easily, well, maybe probably not as easily, but you know, they could ask for a rezone in Murray County.
Yeah, okay.
You know, that's always option, yes, sir.
So, we missed that, I guess, city of Mount Pleasant on zoning for the Truckwood Avenue.
When?
When, the city of Columbia has three hundred feet, so what, you know?
But that, I think what you're talking about, this property, I think, is split, the urban growth boundary goes in the middle of it, so.
It did not always been?
Yes, so the urban, but the urban growth boundary, this property is partially in Mount Pleasant's urban growth boundary and partially in Columbia. So that's why they could grow.
I don't, I don't understand.
So it was something, I think it was done around two thousand, and so there's this map, it's a statewide map that.
Columbia could have a plate on it, plate on both sides and.
I'd have to get, we'd have to go get the actual map. But it, it just, it was like, it's kind of a bubble around each municipality that said, this is how far you could expand. Like if there was no more Murray County, we could all abut each other a certain way. Columbia is closer to their edges, you know, than we are. But the, the reason I bring that up is because there's been some talk about like, could Murray, could, yes, they could develop in Murray County right now, they're in Murray County. But Columbia can't annex this part. Without going to the state and changing a bunch of things.
And our consent after they go to the state.
And a lot, yes, a lot of other things, you know, that would have to happen, it's not, it's not likely.
Is that because we own, we, we don't own it, but the industrial?
No, it's, it's because of the urban growth boundary that the state created.
But on Ozine Road, that piece of property is industrial. That will join this property, right?
Yeah.
So that never come up? I was, I was surprised that it didn't come up.
I think we probably need the map to like really explain it, but it just, it's like a state boundary, isn't it? Okay, yeah.
So, you wanna show them? Can't speak to it.
So that's. Different colors. But you'd see that Mount Pleasant urban, you just.
Yeah, yeah, I know where the, I know exactly where the boundaries are, but that's what I was saying, oh, it looked like to me, I guess whenever Columbia took three hundred feet on both sides of forty-three, two forty-three, that should've went to Mount Pleasant first.
Where is that?
Hey, you're gonna get me to tell them one.
I'm just glad you made it, got your reader tonight.
Yeah, but I can't tell them this right here, it's too small, it's too small.
I think Phillip's trying to bring it up.
It's too small. But on, where the cemetery is.
Yeah.
Okay, there's three hundred feet there that belongs to the city of Columbia. Three feet on the other side of the road belongs to the city of Columbia.
It's just like a little peninsula?
Yeah. And Mount Pleasant didn't get that part. If that, if that was in our, if that was in our boundary, we should've, we should've got it. That's all, you know, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, we can look at that, but as far as I know, that there's not been any crossing of the street without.
Oh, I'm sure it has. Sure it's whoever comes first, that first served.
Well. Anyway, while they're getting that, we can finish this, but what this board would do, there would be an annexation to resolution, so the annexation laws are set by the state, it's that newer process, you know, we're land grabbing. The resolution or the annexation by owner consent has a two-step process for y'all. The first step would be to pass a proposed annexation by owner consent resolution. And that calls for a public hearing on the proposed annexation and plan of services. But all that one does is set the public hearing and it has a lot of notification requirements, like we've got to mail out the plan of services, we've got to make it available, we have to send a lot of letters out, we've gotta put it in the paper, we've gotta publish the plan of services in the paper, we have to do, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of awareness already about this, but there'll be a lot, a lot, a lot of awareness after that happened. So, step one for y'all would be that proposed annexation by owner consent, where you'd set the public hearing, after that, then you would have the annexation, the actual annexation resolution, which would say, we bring this property in pursuant to this plan of services. You would, last time we did that resolution at the same time that we did the public hearing. Have to, but you can. Also, and this is the complicated part, is because the commission must establish a zoning designation for any annexed property simultaneously with the annexation, there would be corresponding zoning ordinance. And so there's two annexation resolutions, and there also are two zoning resolutions because our zoning ordinance says that you've got to, it has to be an ordinance to read. And so you can time those where you're having the public hearing for everything all at the same time. If you wanted to stagger your, there's, there's a lot of room for staggering these things, but there are some like really hard deadlines, like you've got to have notice fifteen days ahead of it. You've got to have notice, you have to send these letters fourteen days ahead of time. You've got to have your zoning and your, your annexation at the same time, so, yes, sir.
So we're going over this tonight, but Tuesday night, we're not gonna do nothing, correct?
I don't know what you're doing Tuesday night, I think we're hoping to kind of.
I'll bet tonight.
See where y'all are tonight as far as moving forward, so. Anything that, the annexation plan of services and the zoning all have to be reviewed by the planning commission, as y'all know, that was done on Tuesday night. So the planning commission recommended, all they do is recommend, right, they don't make any decisions, they recommend, yes, or they recommend no. But the only thing that was before them is the annexation plan of services. So, they recommended that y'all annex the property pursuant to the plan of services that was provided to them. But then when it got to the zoning part, they, what was in front of them was R three, so they did not recommend R three. However, there was a lot of talk about R two, but what important is, they just didn't recommend R two, R three. Even I've got it messed up, they didn't recommend R three. So, the owner requested R three. So, what would be before y'all is R three zoning. And y'all would either, yes, no, defer, you know, your same rules as always. But you would be doing that on a negative recommendation from the commission. So, we have let, obviously the owner was here, we talked to them and explained like, you're coming to the commission with a negative recommendation. If you don't wanna do that, you wanna pull it, you wanna revise it, that's your prerogative. We have not heard any such thing from them, so as far as I know, they want us to proceed with y'all's consideration of R three zoning for the property, so. Done a lot of talking, so what questions?
So, only thing that we would provide at that area from Mount Pleasant's standpoint, if it was annexed, would be fire, sanitation and police, right, we want to supply.
Gas.
And Mount Pleasant's power would have.
Gas is CPW.
Mount Pleasant would do the.
It's not.
So, yeah, there's four, four services. Sanitation, police, fire. There's four, right?
Streets.
Oh, streets, yeah.
So.
And powers, Mount Pleasant's power, Columbia Water gave them the wells at like a.
Will serve later.
And.
We would just gain, I guess, revenue off the taxes.
You would gain revenue off the taxes and you would have the expenses for serving those people that live there. But you'd be, you had the expenses for serving that property, no matter what's being built there. So, when Phillip has worked hard to come up with a cost benefit analysis, but the important thing to think about with, to understand with that is they have presented a concept plan. John Mayer builders knows what they want to build. In a lot of ways, they are limited to that because that's what their Columbia water letter says. That's what apparently the land would only provide enough for that, but y'all are approving R three zoning, right? So, or considering R three zoning, so if they came in and built something different, you would still have to serve police, fire, sanitation.
Regardless.
And streets for those things. But, I don't know where I was going with that, but you would be.
So if you do R two, it's like less homes and R three is more homes.
R three has a higher density.
Right.
Allowance, it also allows for multifamily, so I would encourage y'all to go through and really read the R three section of your zoning text, because it tells you exactly what you, what the possibilities are. Now, is that what they're proposing? No, but you can't say, you can have R three, but you have to build this thing. That's not allowed, I wish it was, it would make everybody's life a lot easier, but that's not within your ability as a given Mount Pleasant. Looking at ways to try to make it so, but that's not the case right now, but, yes, sir.
On the water issue, I know Columbia is saying that they are providing them the water. Let's say, four or five years down the road. Columbia says, Mount Pleasant, y'all gonna have to run water line up here, we can't. In Columbia, back at it.
So, they're getting their will server or their letter of availability or whatever safe it's coming from Columbia. If Columbia just didn't have any water anymore and restricted everybody, they are in our city limits, so that's really not something that there's a lot of guidance on, you know, but that, we're only annexing it pursuant to that service or that plan of services, but I understand the concern and I don't a hundred percent know the answer. If, if Columbia just said, we can't do it, technically this property is in your city limits.
I understand, but to me, you know, when we're, when we incorporate a, a portion of property into the city and we're telling everybody, you know, that we're gonna give you every service that we have here in the city. And if you can't provide same services, even though you can get an outsider to come in and do it, just don't think, you know, we're.
And that would be a good reason to vote.
Right, but I mean, that's just a, a way to get around it.
This one is unique because, well, all of them, all annexations are probably gonna be unique because they're gonna be on the edges of your town, and Mount Pleasant doesn't just have expanding infrastructure, right? So like, all of these places that are gonna be considered for annexation are probably going to be past where you're serving.
Yeah.
And so, you know, in a normal annexation, I would think, not normal, best case scenario, you would provide every single service and you would do it right away. That's not what's presented.
Because it's not, well, we can hook up to it and, you know, we don't have water there to give them, right?
I mean, they could build a water line.
Yeah.
But as of now, I'm just saying, we don't, we couldn't provide, then that's why, that's why Columbia gave a letter of ability.
I know that, but if you're gonna incorporate, I'm not gonna argue, but if you're gonna, but if you're gonna incorporate another piece of property, and I guess where I get that all back from is like where I live. You know, when a city annexes you, you should provide them with those services that you provide, not somebody else. But the other problem, I guess I have, is the sewer. And God done a, a good explaining it. But again, it may last ten, fifteen, it may last fifty years. But once it fails, we've been through this, through the lagoon. If it fails, everybody says, well, they are upheld by the state. What does the state make us do? And they just give away with the lagoon and build a sewer plant.
So, I will say, I don't understand all of it completely, but I've had a lot of conversations with different builders about how those step systems work. Because, you know, my worry was, like you're saying, but what happens if it doesn't work, you know, who's responsible? And there are, there's a separate utility company that manages it and they are responsible, that's who gets paid, that's who like, I'm sure they charge a pretty penny for their services and for being responsible for it, but they're the ones that are like, like a, it's a private utility company, and that private utility company is regulated by the state. So the difference between that and like a lagoon is, we were the owner of the lagoon and operator of the lagoon. The state was in there to like tell us yes or no, just like they review our stormwater plans and things like that. But we never were able to like give ownership to somebody else because it was y'all's project. So, the way those are supposed to be set up is that they are controlled and owned and operated everything by this big perpetual to utility, private utility. Again, that is perfectly good conversation for whether or not you wanna annex this property. Because what if it doesn't work, you know? I think that that is always on them, you know, that it never is y'all, but if, if you had a whole community here that couldn't have any sewer, it's in your city limits. So does that then become your responsibility? I don't know, and no one knows the answer to that question.
I'm just saying, you know, if they did, you know, I mean, I guess they could walk away as far as that goes.
Yeah.
And, but the state is gonna say, I'm sorry, City of Mount Pleasant, y'all need to carry up.
I think that we would be way down the list, but I'm not saying it couldn't happen. And I think another to that argument or thought process, you know, one of the perks of annexation is like you're saying, that you're extending your utility, you know, you're providing it to everybody all along the street. So, that's, it, there's perks in both ways you look at it, right? It's less services you have to provide, that's a win, or if you get more connectivity, that's a win, so. Again, only y'all's decision, and I think those are all about things to discuss when you're deciding.
Mike, I had a question about that too, in Rutherford County, Williamson County and Bedford County, is this system expensive?
Do you like it?
She hasn't told us.
Obviously she has problems with it, you know?
No, well, yes, they do, they do, they do occasionally, but it's just like what he said that, you know, they call somebody, they come and they take care of the problem. But I just, you know, it's just, it's, I don't know, I just got questions.
If, if I might add, how are y'all tonight?
All right, how are you?
Step systems, they, they are pretty common. The big thing about step systems is like septic tank, it requires a lot of maintenance. They have some pumps, they have some drip systems, and when they fail, it's kinda like your septic system, somebody comes in and repairs them. Now, I'm not a step system expert, but what I do know is that there's boundaries, like with the water, so if, if you annex somebody that was serviced by Murray County, we couldn't just forcefully push our water systems, there's a lot that goes into that. Now, T deck, sometimes they can do things that we don't understand, so I can't sit here and say that would never ever happen, but I've never seen it in my career because of those boundaries they serve, we serve. I don't foresee that coming. As far as step systems, they are pretty common in the world, and it's, i- i- if you really wanna think about it, it's, it will fail at some point and they will have to repair and fix it, but it'll be sectional fails, the whole. I wouldn't think unless there was just something astronomically wrong that the entire thing failed, it would be like a collapsed line, cause a septic back up there, they'd have to repair it. I, I hope that helps a little.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
I, I started doing research on it too because, and, and it's really under a total separate public utility company.
So each house will have their own, own tank?
Each house has a pump.
Pump. Rider and a pump.
That, that what they got down there on Pier Seven, you, that guy? I think he got that, but he's got like a pump that, pump, yeah.
That goes to our, our.
And he had to replace it, okay.
We could, we could probably try to like, talk to T deck or, you know, the, the company that would be in charge of maintaining it or something like that, if, if that's, I've asked a lot of these questions before, but not to this specific company. We can try to get more.
But I do know, you know, with HOA, they're putting money back, you know? Or they're supposed to, I assume they are, you know, just when they have problems like.
But theirs will actually be part of their utility bill. They'll get a utility bill from that utility, from, from the whatever the subdivision called.
Yeah.
Sewer system, it will have a charge on their bill directly every time, it's not, it's not a HO, it's the, that utility will issue that bill, it'll.
Do they have like a head on in case something?
I'm sure they do, I mean, they have, because they're public, they can probably charge a little bit more, you know, than y'all can. My understanding is that it is very expensive to create, but that a lot of the maintenance costs is passed back to the buyers, to the people who live there.
Has, has anybody ever done, I guess, maybe to see what it would cost to run somewhere up there?
We have recently asked them to look into that.
Yes.
But that's not something that they've proposed. You know, but, that's a good question.
I don't, have we asked them? I don't know.
We haven't yet, we've talked about asking.
You did?
Got a lot of, a lot of single family homes in between the tile plant and that plant. If you put sewer in between point A, point B, you're gonna have to try to serve them, possibly.
We should be. We're already there, I just, you know, I don't wanna go back.
So we, we've tried really hard not to muddy the water, I know that's impossible, it may be a bad metaphor, but.
That's pretty funny, that's a good one.
We can't, none of that stuff is being proposed yet, so I think if that's something that like y'all wanted them to propose, you would need to talk to the applicant and see if they would revise their. You know, because if they just suddenly, if they wanted to, to look into doing a, a extension of a sewer line instead of the step system, that would change the plan of services, and so we would wanna know that before we advertise the plan of septic. You know, and that would have to go back to the planning commission and that would have to come back to y'all for that initial posting of that, so. You know? We can't, we can ask them to change what they're requesting, but we can't change it for them, so. I think that's where we're in kind of a weird place right now, because we're about to draw a lot of attention to something, and so we wanna see where y'all are, I guess, what, what questions do you need answered before that happens?
I don't know, so.
Well, that's what Cory, Phillip and I had a conference, a conference call with Chris this afternoon, just about the whole thing before we started this, had our meeting, like, just, just Cory, thank you. Explained a lot, and it's very difficult to understand, I'm gonna be real honest, it's really, a lot of moving parts to this thing. It's difficult to understand, Mike, it's like I told Cory and Phillip today. These, the mayors are really good people. They are fine people. And we need to give them an answer. And what I, my conversation this afternoon on our call was, is what my intent for tonight was, for Cory to go through everything she has and think, just get a feel for it so we can be honest and straightforward with, with mayors. But where, do, do you, because they heard R two, they don't, the price of the property prohibits R two. They're not in this to lose money, let's just be honest, okay? And I just wanted to get a feel for, you know, Mike, no, and I.
And the other reason is, Mayor, is because of the other property that it joins is, that's, since it's industrial, it.
A colorblind, but I think it's either light or maybe.
It's where the railroad.
No, no, in the city right there down.
It's where the railroad cars are.
Oh, okay.
So all that is white, industrial.
And you got that all of the time, you got white industrial?
I mean, I know that, but I'm just saying for the, going into the subject.
Right.
Well, I reckon, I'm gonna go with, uh, I support the planning, I'll say annex it, I'm a yes for that.
But we need to discuss whether you're for R three.
I know.
Because that's what's.
Um, so I am okay with that and the R three, just because the builder, who they are, and I just feel like. Tuesday night, I got voted by the citizens of Mount Pleasant. I know a lot of people spoke outside of the city limits and I appreciate their concern. But I know these people here in Mount Pleasant are constantly calling me, they want their roads paved, they want sidewalks. They won't sell. And I know we do this and let it be a R three, we can, you know, we can get revenue for our town. So I'm for annexing an R three, this property.
Pam, you're on the commission, I mean, on the planning, thank you for doing that. I don't think you realized what you were getting into at this.
It's funny, because like how many people were called to speak and they did the same thing I did the last very first time. Um, I definitely want to annex property. And I, I, what I don't want is, you've already got that seven hundred houses, let's stop it there. It becomes Mount Pleasant, and, and just like I said in the meeting, um, I went out and drove and saw their developments. And some of the developments, the homes were very spread out, some of them were, were close. But they were still done in a way that was beautiful and, um, and the, the brick and the rock and the wrought iron everywhere. And it just looks really, really classy neighborhoods. And I also accidentally got off on Butler Road and went out and, and they got houses on a hill that has no business even having a house. Lane, road coming off of old Carers Creek that's barely big enough for one and a half cars to go down. And then they, you know, so there's lots of, it could happen there if Murray County has sole jurisdiction of it, that's what scares me more than anything else. Um, I think my perception, and I voted against R three. My perception of what they presented is, they would have probably had R two, had they had ability to do anything other than the steps system, because the step system requires a huge piece of land. And in order to do that, that's the only space they had left. And I think the farmer that spoke was part of that whole process. Is there's only so much land there that probably can be developed because they said, we're maxed out at that amount. So I, I've struggled with the R three because I hear those people, but same time Willie, I hadn't even really honestly thought about that. Most of them weren't Mount Pleasant people. And, um, I do know that road, all those houses going in there, any houses going in there, th- those two roads are just ridiculous. But, I mean, it is what it is. Um, I think we would finally make sure they got the stoplights. I've, since I've been here in this town, I've heard that we're.
We're not.
No, Columbia was and.
And they all.
So I hear that and, and that lady's testimony about all the people she seemed killed there and almost her own child, I mean, that's a lot. So I feel like, ah, dang. It's hard, it's hard. But I, I think my gut is, I trust them because of multiple people I've heard tell me about their character. And that's why I ask them, why Mount Pleasant, you know, why not just leave it to Murray though, that can do anything probably? Um, but I think he made it clear they want to support us. And, um, so I, I guess. It's hard because I voted no. And I, you know, I feel like that's. But I guess I, I would be okay on it, but I would like to see, I would like. Have they been given that option that if we, if they could, we could rent sewer out there?
Not yet, because it's, we, we got to consider what they have proposed.
Correct.
And I don't want to hold your thought, I just want to say this part too. So our rules are, our, your ordinance is say like, if you want a sewer extension, a water extension, you build it.
Yeah.
However, the city does have the ability to build one, to pay for parts of one, to do whatever, if you feel like it's for the greater good of the city. Y'all have done that before, some of those decisions were good, some of them were not, you know? And we all, we all know which ones those are. But, you know, you do have that ability to say, you know what, we really do want this growth. We want this growth in this particular way, we don't want it to be, we don't want it to prohibit that. So therefore we would, we would do this, you know, you have that ability with your, your sewer line. Um, if you have the capacity and all that, that's, that is something that you, as of right now, have that ability to do. I'm not suggesting it, I'm just saying that you can.
Just giving us that.
Yeah.
Well, and that also then negates the whole idea of we're gonna have money to help build, fix the roads. Because if we're spending money building a sewer all the way out there, you know?
Those are different funds.
Completely different funding sources, so. Couldn't intermingle those.
I mean, I think that's, that's a broad question, but we have the ability for developers agreement and access fees and things like that, that could go into some of that. But that's a broader perspective.
And the builders got to buy off of it.
Yeah, I mean, that was, you know, when we, I don't want to bring up the subject, but when we did the South Cross Bridges, we, part of that plan of services was if you build that line from here to there.
Yeah.
Um, and I think y'all felt good about that because you were extending your utility to its borders, to new borders. So, you know, again, we can't, like Mr. Mayor said, we can't consider something that, um, is not proposed, but we could ask them.
I guess where I, I'm just thinking this right now, the fact that we did, if we had had a bunch, we'd had a room full of people that live here in town. That came and were like, no, we don't want that, that would be different. And, um, the fact that we didn't have an outcry, we have had an outcry. I feel for those folks in that area, but, um, I just, putting a lot of faith in that builder, but I think they've earned it, so.
Yes, but you're not approving.
And they can't, yeah.
You're approving the property.
Okay. It'll be probably connected with, like Miss Willie was talking about, and that's good. But, you know, the citizens of Mount Pleasant on their streets paved and they want sidewalks. How long would it take to recuperate to do that, two hundred homes? To make a, a very.
So I think the process of building those is probably a, a five to seven year process. But I think that's just more key, uh, revenues coming in or ta- our taxes that goes to the total stuff of getting things done. It ju- it increases our general fund to be able to put towards capital projects.
But I mean, that's what I'm saying, you're saying, but, but I'm like, people's wanting streets paved now. So, but I mean, it's, it'll be another five or seven years down the road.
We set up our next generation to be able to have maybe more funds down the, down the road. And then I feel like our revenues, and Shiver can talk more, are getting better and better with our outlook that we're able to do some pilots and pills and everything that's coming off to be able to have capital street paving projects every year moving forward. Uh, you know, this year there's four of them, they won't always do that much because of the utilities under the ground. But I feel like that's just portion, just like we did the expense for the sanitation or the, of the planning service of fire and police. Yeah, there's costs to it, but there are revenues that goes back to the rest of the, the bigger picture. But yeah, it'd take a while for that to triple in and be able to use it.
But even right now, with, with what's coming in, I guess, our sanitation, our police and our fire, if you have to hire and buy.
Yeah.
Oh, we're gonna be okay?
So one of the things when I looked at that, and it, it, like Corey said, it's hard because of the concept plan, but it had to put a price tag on it. So I looked at what it looked like with property taxes and the state shared revenue based off numbers. So as far as sanitation, I just took, if you look at our households now, it's about eighteen hundred and twenty-five households. Those is two forty-seven, so I took the price of a new, uh, trash truck and the trash cans. And even looked at employee shares and just appreciated or expensed that out for that development. It works, it does. The revenue on that, if you did one blue can for what that's proposed, it was like sixty something thousand a year. When I expensed out new trash truck, trash cans over ten years, and then looked at employee share for those two forty-seven, it was somewhere around fifty something thousand, so the math worked. But it's gonna be the same way if we add here, he, from a standpoint. When we looked at the police side of it, took the standards of, how many people in the ha- in this town, five thousand two hundred ninety-six. We looked at the national standard, two point nine people per home, I think it was six hundred and eighteen, that puts it at six thousand. I think the police standard is two point seven, um, officers per thousand people. We did the math on that, it basically come up to three quarters of an officer. He hired three quarters of an officer, so one officer, one car. But with some of the other developments, ultimately, there will be probably four more police officers, four more cars. Now, fire department, they're so good, they're probably okay, but now the automatic aid agreement. Shots fired. But the, the automatic aid agreements with Columbia, and I saw ratings, um, it's so hard to meet those standards. You gotta put sixteen on every fire with station four, us and everybody coming, that works that way. Now, ultimately and long term, we gotta replace equipment anyway, so that would, if it triple ends, help replace some of that equipment for fire. Again, and again, all of that is very broad because we don't know what it looks like or what it's gonna be, because of all concepts at this point. But the best I need to do or we need to do is put it on paper and look at it from that detail, does this work? Yeah, we can make it work, if you put it in front of us operationally, we'll put those plans together to make sure we're getting it.
But Columbia, Columbia's not putting in the stop block.
Yes.
No.
Yeah.
No.
They've already, Mount Pleasant powers have already been meeting with them.
No.
The developers.
Develop, well, okay, but CPWS is gonna be responsible for. Long term.
No, Columbia required it, just like, you know, y'all can require it.
Al's not gonna be responsible for it.
No, Al told me that CPWS is responsible for it. Because I know Al and him have been meeting CPWS, CPWS up there about it. Because their initial thing was, they just wanted to string a wire across there and hang the lights. And Al and them said, no.
Man, I'm, I may, I may be wrong, I apologize, but I am, but I thought, it's in our CD, so I thought we'd have to pay those perpetual.
Because that was part of the gig, if you remember when they approved those seven hundred homes back here.
May, I, again, I don't, so I thought.
Are we talking about a different stop, are we talking about more than one stoplight?
We're talking about the one, Pope Lane and Thine, that's in our city. Yeah, Columbia or the developers put it up, but I, I would, I thought we would be responsible for the electricity or the maintenance fees for it. If we get with Al like we are downtown.
I'll verify that again, wasn't that?
And I could be wrong.
It's not, I probably shouldn't say it, but I was told by somebody that runs the city of Columbia. Columbia would not be, you know, be Mount Pleasant and the.
And that we can pull their development agreement, I'm sure, and find out.
Absolutely.
Because there again, that's, that's where you get back into where would Columbia, from the service, something in Mount Pleasant.
Laura?
I am all for the annexation, no problem. As far as the R three and the property, I'm still on the fence a little bit. Um, I understand that it could increase our revenue. However, I am concerned still about the traffic and that's what most of my calls have been about. Um, I would just like to find out a little bit more about the step system and how it works. Before I totally agree with the R.
Chris, I'm sure they can have somebody here to use tonight to discuss that step system thing. Being the mayors.
Yes. Rob, or.
Whatever.
Architectural engineer, landscaping, uh, he sent me some information, but it was by email. Lot of verbiage, uh, but, yes, he actually had a presentation that he was willing to bring. Um, I knew it would be kind of flooding the water a bit more, so, so yes, he does have that on a, a thumb drive, I'll call tomorrow and make sure he has that. And I'll give it to Michael, that way they can put it on screen if that's.
Yeah.
It might be something, and, and talking at a turn, I'm just really worried about having decisions having to be made on Tuesday before y'all have information. I wonder if there's any way that like, he would talk to her individually.
Yes, and I will, he said that, I talked to John and Jack and they said that if anyone on the commission wanted to come up and view any of their homes, they would be happy to take you on it too, more than happy to.
And it may be to where I can ask him to send that to me, I may have to send it to you in a shared drive so he can view it.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, we're kind of talking about a bunch of different things and I, I just. And that's good, you're sort of, that's your job, but I just, I would hate. I don't want to get the ball rolling.
Yes.
And then ask them to make significant changes to something, because then we have to like, take it back and start over, you know? Um, and we can do that, that's totally possible, and there's nothing wrong with pumping the brakes for a second, I don't think. But I just wanna, let's try to get, if you've got questions, let's try our best to answer them before Tuesday.
Would you be available tomorrow? Chris, you want to see if maybe you can contact the mayors in the morning and see if they might have time to discuss this with Laura over the phone? If you can get a little warmer feeling or colder feeling, whichever one it was.
Yeah. Thank you.
And I go back to the red light deal, what I think on the red light, it's supposed to be two up through there. And if we annex the property, that light that was gonna be in Mount Pleasant will be Mount Pleasant because it'd be on our side. But it's another light that you're talking about, that's supposed to be up the road, the seven hundred homes or something.
Yeah, holds up.
Yeah, call me.
Is that extension my, is that an idea?
It is, but I think the seven hundred homes going there, it'll be another red light and they'll be responsible for that, but I think you're getting them, yeah.
Backwards.
Yeah.
And on that, I want to draw another fine line in between the discussion. Because traffic is something that would be discussed in depth at a uh, sub, when a preliminary plat is presented. That's when we would have a traffic study, that's when we would have like entrance, exits, all the improvements they would have to do, all of that stuff. But it is very relevant to the density conversation, like, you know, because the density of how many people could be there is way, could be way more with R three than with R two. So I just want to point that out, that we are talking about, is that density appropriate for this area? That's where the traffic part comes in. You know, we had that guy that had like very detailed, uh, comments about, um, the traffic study that was done. There'll be a real tra- another traffic study done to meet y'all's zoning or your subdivision regulations if it were to be approved. But that part would be addressed specifically, the runoff, all that stuff would be addressed as part of or preliminary plat, but it is really relevant to, is R three the right? So I think, like, when y'all are, when you're thinking about how you want to vote, I think a good thing to do would be go look at the R three section of the zoning text and the R two section of the zoning text. And see like, you know, R two's not on the table, but really R three, R two only for comparison. And that might help you kind of look.
Well, not to throw another monkey in the wrench, but Jennifer did bring up, um, something I didn't know on Tuesday night. And that's in our, in our zoning rules, the, we're, R three is supposed to be located near a downtown area. Their sidewalks, people can walk to town, that kind of thing. So that was one of the things that was, um, that we talked about, you know, at least it was laid out there that that isn't part of our, um, we would be kind of changing that. Or is that setting a precedent, I guess? Or is that not for discussion?
I like for you to follow your zoning text or give reasons why you're.
You're waving it.
You're not waving it, you're always following it, but you are using it to make your decision. So R three is also, it's supposed to be connectivity, it's also there to provide commerce, so, you know, use that for your discussion, you know, those, what the purpose of R three is for, that's what you're supposed to look at when you're deciding where it should go.
Positive, not the negative.
Well, either one, you know, like, it, I mean, you could make arguments either way. I mean, it is supposed to be located downtown, but it's also supposed to be there where it can.
And we don't really have any word to put how. And we don't really have any word to put houses that connect to downtown.
Where you gonna put, where you gonna put R three in downtown?
It doesn't, it doesn't.
It's not gonna happen.
Maybe at some point that area down there, we've already got restaurant, and that, the gas station and Dollar General, and so that may become more. Anyways.
Yeah, I mean, that.
Cause she brought that up and I didn't.
You look at a lot of, I mean, you look down on East Merchant, some of those, merchant, there are thirty. Right now. We just don't know it. I mean, it's true.
They're non-conforming.
I don't know what it was on when they built them, but if you go up and down too, they're, they're very small lots.
It's a good word, non-conform?
Probably so.
They're non-conforming to what they're actually done.
Right.
Okay. Guess it's my turn.
Yep.
I've looked at this very hard, and I cannot get away from the income side of it. And realizing, and, and by the way, Philip and Shiper and, and every staff member did an excellent job at putting.
He was the best packet, all of a sudden, I mean, Chris, you just did.
And, 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 and the cost benefits of what we, what we were gonna have to do, what, what it would get, what we would have income coming in, if you just look at building permits alone.
Right.
What would be there? And I'm, I've tried to make sure I walk a fine line with that, because there's always two sides to that story. But I know this builder. And I know this family. And they don't build junk. They build fine, quality homes that would be a great part of this community. I think that we would love to have that in this, in this community. And for that reason, particularly, and, and the understanding that right now with CPWS providing the water. And, um, some of the stuff it's doing, the way that this is kind of shared, cost shared, that I don't see, I, I, yes, I'd be for it, right now. So. Uh, Lori, I'll, Chris, if you would, again, please try to get. Laura set up tomorrow, if nothing else, but for a phone call. He's doing it right now.
He's sending notes to himself. Yeah, he emailed himself.
Oh, I thought maybe you were texting her right now. Okay. Any other conversation on this one, we've spent. Almost as much time as, as the, uh, comments took last night from the citizens. All right.
Keeping it on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, please. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five, a city resolution, the city of Mount Pleasant for payment and lieu to Mount Pleasant power system, and Shiper has given me these numbers. Last year's for, uh, Mount Pleasant Power was four hundred and ten thousand. Uh, twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six, Mount Pleasant, uh, resolution for the payment and lieu from the gas system last year was eighty thousand, now, again, uh, Shiper. Wanted me to reiterate, these will be recalculated.
To get recalculated when we get the new, uh, taxes don't come out until.
That's right. And then, uh, Mount Pleasant Housing Authority, eighteen thousand. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight, a resolution to replace the radio tower out back, it got damaged, seventy-nine thousand.
Mayor and commissioners, I sent you an email, uh, a few weeks back about that, uh, so we did make a claim, Public Engineering Partners, they did settle it. But instead of going back with the new tower because of the digital radio system that's coming in the near future, uh, proposal to put in a, a pole and a tornado siren. Along with updating weather cameras with Tennessee Valley weather.
Yeah.
Um, what's good about this, we're piggybacking off of Columbia and Murray County Office of Emergency Man Plan, they're putting them strategically in locations. So there's one going at Mount Pleasant High School, and this one would go here if you approve it, and it's all controlled by, uh, nine one one dispatch, so that would set them off.
That's awesome.
In our various.
Good job.
Sounds like it'd be safer.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions on any of those, one, two, three, four?
No.
Five, excellent. Uh, Philip, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine, a resolution to approve the ARPA money for a contract amendment to heat coat and Davis.
Mayor and commissioners, this is, um, the ongoing ARPA project, if you remember several years ago, uh, we had two projects, one was to buy more water in Wind Springs. We realized pretty quick during drought, there's no more water there, so we petitioned to, uh, TDEC and our, um, engineers to move all that to the asbestos line from the bridge. All the way to the end of our system, system, um, in that, this is amendment to the contract for some more surveying. Also, there was a caveat in that plan, that TDEC required us to do a water loss, um, control plan. So he's adding twenty more thousand dollars to that plan, had ten in the budget to begin with. So it's just amendment to his contract, this project has to be bid out by the, uh, has to be awarded by the end of August, so I know it's still in TDEC, in review. So hopefully that gets going, is, uh, approved by TDEC and also bid out and awarded by August, end of August.
Okay, any questions on that? Shiper, a resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty, a resolution to, to approve a grant anticipation note for the downtown project, we talk about this a lot, hey?
We have more than enough grant money to cover this project, TDEC is just extremely slow at processing our reimbursements, and the contractor is all pretty much done. With the, they sent of the project with us, they just have to do the landscaping and some little things that are on back order at this point. So we are requesting, and I've talked to the comptroller's office about it. Um, to try to transfer some funds from the general fund, so we can actually make. Payments to the invoices that will eventually come back to us from T-DOT. But currently, I am still waiting on T-DOT to reimburse me what we paid Adams from November all the way through March. And of course, we haven't even filed them, but reimbursements for April, May and June, because those invoices I haven't been able to pay, because I'm waiting on T-DOT to pay us. Do we have enough money in the budget for this? Yes, we have, but we have used up our funds that we budgeted. To float the money that T-DOT was supposed to be giving us. So at the end of the day, when it's all said and done, we will be fine, even, and there. Did you have a chance to email the commissioners about the four hundred, or you wanted me to talk about it? Um, they actually, because they, I don't know if it's because they realize how. Orly they have kept up with this paperwork. And it's an email, so I'm not saying something that they haven't said to everybody, including the contractor at this point, um, that they're giving us another four hundred thousand dollars to cover the change orders. We're not, at the end of the day, we're still gonna have to make up the twenty percent of the match, but we'll take the match over paying the whole cost. So that is going to come to you all as soon as TDEC is actually, T-DOT is actually presenting that to their. Board on July the sixteenth at their meeting, once they pass it all, that'll come to us as an amendment to the current contract for this project. So at the end of the day, which is probably gonna be December or November, it's gonna. Benefit us, but right now, I have to borrow money from the general fund to be able to pay Adams, cause it's not fair for Adams that has done all the work at this point. And they're waiting, and as of this afternoon's conversation, ca, conversation, T-DOT usually only allows you, uh. Cities to submit one invoice a month, because they have been so behind for us, they're gonna allow us to submit multiple invoices a month, so starting, hopefully, next month. They're going to speed up the process by reviewing our applications and doing, they're giving us. Priority on reimbursements, but I'm not going to hold my breath on this one, cause this has been going on for about, I'd like to say about eight months now.
Been close to a year.
Yes, there's a lot back and forth, and most recent thing was they forgot to open a PO for the check. And I could not believe that that was actually in an email, so, that, but that's legitimately from the state to us, that they did not.
Mayor, may I add to that?
I was interested, it's like, I mean, anyway.
Mayor, may I add to that, so?
Philip's trying to be serious here.
I'm not trying, so indirectly, and we're having to go to general fund, and she talked it alone, the state does it alone, but we're just going into the money, there's no interest on it.
Yeah, I didn't even explain that.
But indirectly, the four streets we're gonna pay, want to hold off. But we are, and I've got it together, we're gonna go ahead and bid out the great lane portion, but the other three, it's not the way to the spring, because that's what we're gonna pave streets with. Yeah.
So, and, and that's the thing, it's, it's because, I was like, could we just do an inter-fund transfer, it's less than six months that I need this money for, and I did, but they want to consider it a grant anticipation note. And because it's a note, it has to be approved by you all, then I have to send it to the comptroller's office for approval. But it's, it's been a lot, the last twenty-four, well, forty-eight hours, but at the same time, we got four hundred thousand dollars out of all these conversations, I'll take it.
You know what they did to me? We did all the transportation for the state, and they would take up to a hundred and twenty days to pay. Which is.
I believe it.
So then some girl goes to me, I called them like, I can't wait a hundred and twenty days on it, it's too big.
Yeah.
And she goes, just put big, use a black marker and write payable upon receipt and underline it at the top of the page, we got our money in thirty days.
Wow.
All right, anything else?
Try that, maybe we need to try that.
But don't forget the interest we saved off of all that.
I've got, the interest is, we have actually spent majority of that money.
All this has been gone.
Almost.
Almost.
Not all of it, but almost.
We started about three hundred and a hole, didn't we? Yes.
Originally, we started the project a little bit in the hole, but we were gonna use.
And then plus change order.
The interest money and things like that to cover it, so, but then we added three hundred thousand of change orders, but now with them giving us the four hundred, we should be getting back to normal. And if we get the radio grant from USDA that we are still in the running for, if the federal government was solid application, supposedly our application has been at the. Federal lever from the USDA local office for months at this point. So we're not out of the running on that, so if we get that, that's about two hundred thou, two hundred thousand dollars that we paid in radios that USDA is supposed to pay us back, but the. Emergency communication that we're doing with the county, so I have hope, he didn't say that we're denied on that, and again, we did not expect to get any calls from the state on getting the four hundred. So, uh, like I said, right now, the, the project is, when it closes out, and of course, I've got a spreadsheet, nobody wants to look at that spreadsheet anymore, cause it's too complicated, but if anybody wants it, I can email you all a copy. That shows every little bit of what we've done with this, cause I've got to explain all this to the auditors this year, and then, um, there was one more thing on it. You don't know anymore, but, um, this project has really been rough, and then budget passed yesterday, that's what it was. I, I'm just glad that by the time we get done with it, the four hundred thousand dollars is gonna help pay for all of our change orders and the string lights too, cause there's thirty-seven thousand dollars we have to, we haven't paid, cause the string lights were addition to the project at the end. Or when we first did it, and then power company, that's what I was gonna say, power company has been a great partner in all of this, and. They're going to pay their portions and everything to make sure they match up to the five sixty-nine that they obligated to it, with all the work that they've already done and all the material they already bought. And then if they had any overages, I was saying, by the time he gets done with the project, you know, he wants to make sure he contributes what they decided to do, so.
All right, I got, I got the last thing right quick, cause everybody's tired.
You wanna go?
I got this email this morning, I've already let Philip know this, I got this email this morning, dear Mayor White, next week, Acne United will purchase a land and building at one oh three Sam Watkins Boulevard, it is the, uh, Doug Jeffords Building. Currently Georgia Spies. We will be moving our spill magic operation in January of twenty-sixth from a leased facility in Smyrna to its new permanent home in Mount Pleasant.
Wow.
Bill Magic makes spill cleanup products for use in the home, industrial and medical markets, growing rapidly and it's outgrown its former space, currently employed. Thirty people in a Smyrna site that will be transferred to Mount Pleasant, as well as hiring additional employees. Bill Magic is owned by Acne United Corporation, which is one of the largest manufacturers of first aid and related products in North America. As well as one of the largest suppliers of footing tools globally. They're listed on the New York Stock Exchange, symbol ACU.
So where's that, Billy?
Out in Sherrling.
Oh, wow, that's great.
They say Acne, is that the BP?
That's with the same conversation that, it was in there this morning, Philip, when I was reading it to you, and somebody said, oh, it's a Road Runner.
So, so just to be clear, the goal Thursday, Tuesday, if possible, is that we would actually move forward with the first.
Oh.
Reading of, of moving on.
The first.
Motion to adjourn.